Yeah.
Ken, how'd your water work last night about 11?
Good start.
Didn't notice the toes morning.
You did?
No.
I was getting ready for bed and I went to go use the water and it just started dribbling. And I said, "Man, I spoke way too much tonight."
Hey, hold up, Jillian. Did Larry digs himself yesterday or what?
The recorder's on for you.
Busted water main on 196.
Oh, really?
Yeah, between here and this football.
Spent two hours talking about last night. That type of stuff. Are you okay?
Yes, we are set.
Council was set? Seven o'clock, like to bring the meeting to order. Will the please rise for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Garrison?
Present.
Counsel Bickford?
Present.
Counsel Pesky?
Present.
Counsel Ward?
Here.
Counsel LaRashaw?
Here.
Counsel Mason?
Here.
Counsel Lund?
Here.
First item, please.
Public hearing, the fireworks ordinance amendment.
I'd like to open this public hearing. If, I think it's just a quick overview. I mean, pretty much what we're doing is the ordinance has changed just to reflect the time. Some of our times were actually more lenient in the state and we can't do that. We actually have to be anything more restrictive. So, we have actually adjusted our times of how late you can use fireworks to actually mirror what the state's limits are. Anybody have any input for the public hearing on the fireworks? Dot?
Well, I'm just kind of curious. I know I've been here for the other meetings and I haven't read at all, but there have been fireworks going on in Lisbon Falls last night, two or three times a week? Anybody paying attention?
I think it is. I mean, from what we hear, they are reacting on it, so.
There's been summonses. If you read the local paper, Lisbon has summoned several different people for fireworks.
Last night, they went on for probably a half an hour or more. They'd shoot them off and then five minutes later, you know, five minutes into building.
Unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, we can actually try to put the rules in place, but unfortunately, we can't control everybody, how they're gonna live by them.
Acting on the wrong side of the street or doing something wrong, I expect to be cited.
Anybody else for the public hearing, fireworks? CNN will close that public hearing. Next item, please.
Audience participation. At this time, those in the audience who wish to address the counsel may come forward to address items or issues that are on the agenda for this meeting.
I'm Larry Fillmore from Lisbon. At the last council meeting, this council approved the award of the road striping contract to Markings Inc. without having an official sealed bid present. According to Mr. Eldrich, it was simply left off by accident. What Mr. Eldrich did not tell the council was, an email, not a sealed bid, was sent from Markings Inc. exactly one hour and 36 minutes after the opening of the sealed bids, which there were none, and the closing of the formal bid process. This email is what the town is calling an official bid. However, then, according to our purchasing policy, vendors may submit their bid in writing or by oral communication only for informal bids. This requires a formal bid, it's over $5,000. How did Markings Inc. know to send a quote by email at that exact time? I'll bet if you check Mr. Layton's emails, you will find that he sent an email to Markings Inc. that very morning. This council approved striping contract without a formal valid bid, a sealed bid being present. Also, Lucas Striping wanted to bid on this contract and never received the RFP or an email from Mr. Layton. I know that it is not the town's responsibility to ensure these companies receive the RFP, but everyone should have the same right to bid on the RFP. I monitor the town website several times a week, and the last posted RFP was for someone for the economic department. I never saw any of these RFPs on the website as Mr. Layton stated. Markings Inc. is a Massachusetts company, and Sir Lines A Lot is a New Hampshire company. However, Lucas Striping is located in Lisbon, Maine. Also, there's a company called Pine State Safety Lines Inc. out of Topsum, which was never considered. Why do we have to go to Massachusetts for this contract instead of keeping our money in Maine? Supporting business in Maine helps the economy of Maine. Remember to keep Maine green. This is the second contract approved by this council which violates our purchasing policy. I'd like to see the agenda item 2013-1118, orders, carries, and transfers tabled until the next meeting. I do not believe it's fair to the counselors or the people to provide the documentation the night of the meeting. This was not, this does not allow anyone an opportunity to review the agenda item properly. If the council does not table this item respectfully, request, the people have an opportunity to speak on this item prior to the council voting on it. All agenda items are required by the council working rules to be submitted to the town manager no later than close of business on Thursday in order to appear on the agenda. Not meeting these requirements puts both counselors and the people with insufficient time to properly review the document in order to intelligently address the issue. I see the Roarumbo Mill is on the agenda as a public notice to see if the people want to purchase the mill under a bond. This town has suffered tax increases for the past two years, and floating a bond will surely continue this trend every year. I have listened to Amanda Bunker talk about making Lisbon appealing to the public, but when you drive around Lisbon, you see businesses closed and many houses for sale because they can't afford to live here. Reducing our taxes will help people stay in Lisbon. Thank you.
Richard Nettle of Lisbon Falls, Maine. I'd like to, I see the Roarumbo Mill is on the agenda following up from Fillmore. I think as far as regarding that mill, I don't think we should float a bond. I think what we ought to do is let the owners tear it down, and we'll save the money. They're being taxed every year. If we tear it down, we lose that money. Let them tear it down, the owners. Thanks.
Dot Fitzgerald again, longtime resident of Lisbon Falls. I see the write-up in the newspaper this morning, the Lewiston Sun Journal, about the Roarumbo Mill, and it was free. Wasn't so hard, was it? Get a little advertising. I was hoping that would bring more people here, but I'm disappointed that it isn't. The, concerning the Roarumbo Mill land and buildings, it's not just the building that is being offered to the town. The land has considerable frontage on the Andersgoggin River that could be developed into a scenic waterfront park. At the August 20, 2030, public hearing, you will be asking the citizens and taxpayers of the town of Lisbon to consider purchasing a property sight unseen. I do not know if anyone would purchase a property sight unseen. I would propose before the public hearing guided tours of the property, the building, the land, especially the waterfront. These public guided tours would be publicized, hopefully, and not just fine print, legal fine print, a nice article in both Lewiston and Brunswick papers, so that the public is put on notice and have the opportunity to have guided tours of the building and the land. Let the public get a feeling for it, see the views, see the possibilities. The city of Lewiston has gone after and received many grants to renovate the Bates Mill buildings. They don't always go to the taxpayer. The taxpayers of the town of Lisbon do not have deep pockets. The Cabot Mill in Brunswick was renovated many years ago, and I have a feeling that it was with grant money, not just taxpayer money. The Topsum Mill, the mills in Topsum part of the old Pajepscap Paper Company, the Topsum Division, look how that has been developed. I'm 90% sure that was with grant money. You're always looking for the taxpayers to support these things, to do them. Why not look for grants? The Farnsworth Mill Building in Lisbon Village, look what it looks like now. That was with grant money. To purchase and develop the miller property properly would take a lot of expertise. The Farnsworth Mill Building was renovated, and not without a lot of problems. So, it would take people, someone with expertise, not just in writing the proper grants, but in developing the site and the building. The Moxie Festival brings thousands to the town for one, two, three days. Developing the Roarumbo Mill site could bring business, people, and money to Lisbon for years to come, but it needs to be done right. And then I'll add, conclude with, I'm just a delusional old lady with over 30 years of experience in sales and merchandising, and not just in real estate. I don't know why anyone would listen to me.
Anybody else for audience participation?
This is Richard Nettle again, Lisbon Falls. I don't believe we should try to fix that building. You just look at the cost in the paper, trying to revitalize that building. It's an old dinosaur that was built in 1919 to 1920. It's almost 100 years old. It's old, it's leaky, drafty. There's no way you can really fix a good furnace on there. I mean, they've tried, but it's just an old, old building. It'd be better just to plow this, have them take it down, and the land, we could probably use if they wanted, you know, that part to sell to us, but it could be, that could be fixed up because that river's gonna clean up, and the value of that land is gonna go up. Maybe not in my time, maybe, you know, possibly not in your time, but someday it will, and that'll be a good addition to the town. I mean, Lewiston's looking towards the waterfront, but as far as us paying 600, no, that I'm against.
Roger Cody, Lisbon Falls. Purchasing the mill in Lisbon Falls, the tearing down of that mill would be an expense that would be astronomical, not knowing what's under the mill. Chemicals, these buildings, I remember when these mills were functioning, and there was a lot of chemicals used in them old buildings. And I think before we open ourselves up to live in, in owning something like that, I think we better give this some real high consideration, because this could turn into a super site for cleanup. We don't know what's under there, and destruction of a big building like that is astronomical. It's in the millions of dollars, and then once we own it, we own it. My opinion. Thank you.
Anybody else for audience participation? CNN will move on.
Audience participation response?
I'll just do a couple of quick ones, but we'll be going over this a lot when we have discussion. I do want to apologize for the article in the paper. It was a great article, but there was some, a little bit misleading. The $600,000 figure was not, that's not an actual figure. As far as, it was the original asking price, but not what the town, it was offered to the town, but, I mean, that information will come out sometime. And one of the things that we've been holding off on in quite a bit of time is, just response to Mr. Cody's, and we'll talk about this later, is for the last two or three months, the town has been doing extensive research into actually DEP, having people come in, test the site, check them for lead, check the window caulking. We've done a lot of homework on this site. Met with DEP multiple times, not just in this location, the other ones, but we'll go into detail on this when we start talking about it, but from the cost of demolition to multiple other people looking at it, I mean, we've done a lot of homework. So, hopefully tonight, when we talk about it, we'll be able to share that and put it out there. I mean, it's either something that the town's gonna want to agree to or not, but just to respond back to those that came up during the audience participation. That being said, we'll move on to the next item, Twyla.
Is the consent agenda. Any counselor wishing to have any item removed may do so now. Order 2013-115 to approve the minutes of July 16 and the renewal liquor license for Good Time Lanes.
I'll make the motion to accept.
I'll second.
All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda?
Order passed, seven zero.
Next item, please.
Is under council waters, resolutions, and ordinances, order 2013-116 to award the dump trailer bid.
Right. It's actually supposed to be a dump body. Got a couple of things to do over tonight. One, the first one is stainless steel dump body that we budgeted for. We advertised on the website as well as sending it to CN Wood, Messer Truck Equipment, Howard P. Fairfield, and Viking Sives. We received two bids, one from Howard P. Fairfield with a base bid of $29,788, with a bid alternate of $5,685, for a total bid of $35,473. And we also received a bid from Viking Sives with a base bid of $35,200, with a bid alternate of $5,755, and a total bid of $40,955. Requesting permission to purchase the dump body from Howard P. Fairfield. It's identical model that we have on every other truck other than the little dump truck that we have, and we've had real good luck with them, keep everything consistent.
Any questions for counsel on the bodies?
Ryan, what do we actually budget for this item? Do you remember?
We budget a lease payment, and it's, we budgeted $12,000 for the lease payment. Jessica ran the numbers on this one and then the following item, and based on, the bank was looking at lumping the two projects together for one lease payment. We have a total of $28,000 per lease payments, which would give us, she said, 2.69% for five years was gonna be the term for these two projects that we'll talk about.
So, we're gonna be within the lease payment that we budgeted for?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? And just, a lot of people don't have the information we have. I mean, the base bid is actually for the equipment itself. The bid alternate is actually the installation of the, and prepping of the truck, correct?
Correct.
So, the two together, it's actually something we're not actually installing ourselves. It's actually an installed.
No, the last couple, what we've done is we end up stripping the old body off here at the shop, and then we'll take it up to Howard Fairfield there in Skowhegan. They'll mount the new body and then send it back. We've, sometimes we've had them do, we've installed the lights and whatnot, but that's turned into more of a hassle, so we're gonna just have them do everything when it's up there.
And how are the other stainless ones holding up? I mean, we?
They've held up very well. The one issue that we did find was that, and they've made some changes, but the tailgate, tailgates weren't all, it's almost like they were one-off builds because they just weren't, they weren't, we thought they were all gonna be interchangeable, and they weren't. So, we've modified how, what we ordered for tailgates, so that way we have enough hot top tailgates and whatnot, but they've held up real well. I mean, all the stuff that's underneath isn't holding up great, but that's what we have to keep up on.
Yeah, I mean, because the floor and stuff, still steel, the moving floor and some of these.
The floor itself is, but it's, I think it's an AR 400 is what it is, but it's got a very high tensile strength and, I mean, and yield, so it's a lot harder than regular steel. And we looked at it, and the stainless, there's another body you could buy that had the stainless floor, but that's not gonna be as durable for dropping, I mean, because we use, it's not, do one thing, if you were just using it for salt and sanding, but when we're doing work with rocks and everything else, these will hold up better.
It's one downfall of stainless steel. If you're looking at bolts, you either can have like a grade eight or a grade 10, are very strong, but the down, aluminum, they don't grade them because stainless is very durable, but not very strong. Doesn't have much of a yield or tensile strength, but they're holding up pretty well. Now, one last question. How many do we still have left to replace?
This will be the last one.
This is the last one?
The last steel dump body that we have, and it's, you can tell, seeing the one truck that still has a yellow body on the back that's mostly rust.
Yellow and orange, you mean?
Yeah, it's mostly rust.
Yeah.
So, this is the last one, last one to do, and then we're gonna have to start looking at chassis replacements here in the future.
Any other questions for counsel? CNN wanted to do an entertaining bid for Howard Fairfield, the replacement of the stainless body, for the total bill of 35, bid of $35,473.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Order passed, seven zero.
Next item, please.
Order 2013-117 to award the trash trailer bid.
Right. We have, again, we budgeted for to replace one of the compacting trash trailers. If you've, I think when you guys went on your tour, you saw how little is left to the underside of it, and they weren't really old, which is discouraging. I think they were only 10 or 12 years old. So, what we've done is, we put out a bid and sent it to CN Wood, Messer Truck Equipment, and Howard P. Fairfield. And we received one bid. It was after the bidding deadline, which disclosed upfront, and so there was no complaints. For Messer Truck Equipment, which is basically the specification that we use when we did the RFP, it was, it is the trailer that we wanted. The base bid was $82,200. There's a bid alternate of $7,000. That bid alternate is to change the sides and the floor and the tailgate to a Hardox steel, which is significantly more durable than the tensile steel, which is the standard equipment, I guess, for lack of a better term. And we're requesting permission to purchase that trailer from Messer Truck Equipment with the bid alternate for a total of $89,200. And again, we ended up, we budgeted lease payment, same idea, and the lease payment was $16,000, like I said, so we're back to 2.69 for five years for both of these items.
Any questions from counsel?
I just want to make sure I understand the material that we're replacing. The one that's old and needs to be replaced is the tensile steel, and we'll be replacing it with something that's tougher.
We'll also be washing it more often, I'll tell you that. I add, because I thought I really wanted to see it myself, but pass these around. These are the two different options that we get for steel. They did a little testing at, I think the guys at WA Messer were playing. That shows you the two, two different versions of the same, they're playing with the guns by the looks. The difference in the durability of the two products, and going with the tensile, the Hardox is gonna be a much better, much better option for us.
Especially if people are shooting at you, is that what you mean?
Stuff that people throw in those bins.
And more maintenance will help them, too.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest thing is, I mean, the problem we've had with these ones is that they've rotted out from the underneath, and it's the cross members that have rotted out, so it's gonna be important for us to clean them regularly. We did have them painted, the underside painted, and had a more specific specification in terms of priming it with epoxy primer and then putting a undercoating over it. That was just, I thought that was worth sharing.
Just a question, do we have a pressure washer at the town garage?
There's several.
Okay, I was just curious.
They all know how to use it, too.
Okay, and they're gonna get used more often, right?
It's hard with the trash trailer because we've gotta get it washed and then put it inside in the winter time. Because the trash will freeze along with everything else.
Any other questions, counsel? This is actually, pretty much wraps up our trailers, right? Or do we still have one more?
No, this is the last, we've still got the little dump trailer, but now that we're not hauling the brush and leaves, I mean, we're still on the leaves, but now that we're not hauling the brush ourselves, it's not as critical, and that one's in fairly good shape. That was one of the ones that we had initially budgeted to do some preventative maintenance this year with sending it off to have it sandblasted and painted, but with the budget, you know, being pushed in the corner the way we were, we didn't have a choice. This trailer had to be replaced. It's on the verge of being taken off the road by the mechanics due to, I mean, it's just, it really is just falling apart, so. We've had people come and look at rebuilding them, which we did last year, and it's, we're gonna be much further along just by getting rid of it and trying to go a different route in the future.
Any other questions for counsel?
I've looked at it, I know what it is.
You know what it is, huh?
Pretty bad, huh?
Yeah, it is.
And this is on the, we've been putting off for a while, so this isn't, I mean, this has been kind of?
Yeah, it was one of the things that Wayne had had in the, you know, in front of you for a couple of years, and he kept saying, "Oh, we can get one more year."
One more year?
He was kinda right, but we were cutting it pretty close.
We did it, not probably not because we're supposed to, right? The, with that being said, I guess an entertaining motion to actually accept the bid from Messer Truck Equipment, it would be a total bid, including the base bid of $82,200 and the alternate bid, which is basically the assembly and doing the alternate work to it, of $7,000, making a total bid of $89,200, and entertain a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Order passed, seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Next item, please.
Order 2013-118, carries and transfers.
We actually discussed prior to the meeting that we're gonna wait till our next meeting to actually bring this up.
Gonna move the item?
Just asking the counsel if there's, all those in favor of actually moving this to our next meeting?
Yep.
We're all good? Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Twyla. Next item, please.
Order 2013-119, fireworks ordinance, second reading, roll call vote required.
Again, this is actually going back to a first reading in a public hearing. We discussed this, basically just a change in how it is to actually get us in compliance with the state regulations, so I entertain a motion to accept the second reading.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, and this is a roll call vote?
Okay. Counsel Lund?
Yes.
Counsel Garrison?
Yes.
Counsel Mason?
Yes.
Counsel Bickford?
Yes.
Counsel Pesky?
Yes.
Counsel LaRashaw?
Yes.
Counsel Ward?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero nays, order passed.
Next item, please.
Order 2013-120, the timber harvesting ordinance, first reading, roll call vote required.
Okay, I can give a little history on this.
Do you want to give a little history on that?
Actually sat through, Dawn's here. You can be part of history. No, if you would like to, I mean, I, this is actually quite simple, and Dawn can actually add anything if you want. I actually sat through the planning board meeting. This is actually just a change that we need to do. The state actually came up with a little different requirements for our timber harvest by the water, if I believe it's near shoreline. It actually, there's a few options the town had to do. They could actually come up with their own ordinance, they could modify it, or just stick with the template the state had, which is a very straightforward template. The best thing about going with the state is basically the state takes care of the whole permitting process, so the town doesn't have to get involved. The town actually, I guess, is involved to the point of knowing what's happening, where it's gonna be done, but this is strictly timber harvest near shoreline, and it's actually, it's mandated by the state that we actually do make a change, so this is more, more or less not, just more of a correction to our ordinance that we have to make it comply with what state wants. Is there anything else that you'd like to add to that, Dawn, or is that maybe, I skinned over it maybe too easily, but?
All I can say is that it appeared that the alternatives we had were either develop our own, modify our existing one so that it accepted the state's standards and allowed them to oversee it, or let them do it along the same guidelines, and it seems simpler to us, the expertise is there, to let the state do what they're already involved in. And at the same time, unofficially, they've informed us that they will know. in. And at the same time, unofficially, they've informed us that they will notify us before they do anything anyhow, so that's what we took the position that, uh, it should be abolished and let the state do it.
So that's basically the highlights of it. It, it wasn't really too exciting. It's more the idea of, um, going over and making sure the documentation was correct. So with that being said, I'd entertain a motion to accept the first reading of the timber harvest, um, change.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
This, um, need to be roll call, or can you just?
Roll call, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, council lunt?
Yes.
Council Garrison?
Yes.
Council Mason?
Yes.
Council Bickford?
Yes.
Council LaRicheau?
Yes.
Council Pesky?
Yes.
Council Ward?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, order passed.
Next item, please.
Order two thousand thirteen, one twenty-one, to authorize the public notice for a Rumbow mill.
All right. Um, this discussion, actually, we've been, um, just let the public know. This is something that we have been discussing for quite some time with, uh, with council, and a lot of it actually was actually, um, executive session because of, because of the, um, the need for financials and trying to figure out exactly what direction we were going, um, and how that actually was involved with economic development. Um, just kind of give a brief history. Steve has done quite a bit of homework on this. Um, as we all know, the mill, as most of our mills, actually stopped functioning quite some time ago. Um, this mill has actually been for sale for quite some time. Uh, the price started quite, quite expensive. It was, um...
Just under a hundred thousand.
Just under a million, a million at the time. Um, there's a lot of people, actually seen a lot of, um, vested interest at the mill at the beginning when it first came up for sale. Um, as you all know, and actually was alluded to during the, the audience participation, there were a lot of, seemed to be a lot of baggage potentially included with this. Um, the first thing that, the first attempt to do anything with this mill was the town, actually, when Scott was here, and even in, since then, has been actually to help the mill actually sell this property. We've been working very hard. We've actually done a lot of tours. We've actually guided and, and held hands with a lot of people that seem to actually try to guide them through. Um, that's working through processes, trying to find funding, trying to find resources, trying to get them hooked up in all the right, the right people. Um, actually even doing the homework for them to find out what it would cost to get this, um, property doable. Over the last couple of years, what we've really found is, um, it's just, the mill is an old mill that actually, it's, it's, there's a reason why it's closed, and, and the downfall is, is, as again was mentioned during audience participation, the, the cost to bring this mill to the point where it would actually need to be, uh, need to be, to be effective for someone to even start, and, um, the costs are just, just, just drastic. Um, we actually, working with our one ninety-six, um, master plan and, and working with some of the people that were actually helping us on that, we actually had some outside developers come through and actually just tour it and give us their opinion, you know? You know, as a town, should we keep pursuing the idea of trying to sell it? Should we, what should we do? And, and most of the professionals coming in that didn't know any background from what we were trying to do basically said, the only thing that could happen with this is to tear it down. It's, it would be very hard to get an investor in here to actually make this work. Um, there's been other people along the line, and one of the things that I've heard most people say is they really want to have control of what happens at that mill. They want to see something good happening, because it is the downtown. It's a, it's the biggest thing of our downtown area. Um, even as of late, we have actually had some people, um, show interest in it. But I gotta tell you, the biggest part of the people who show interest is more for affordable living, more so than the idea of anything that we would think of really exciting downtown. One of the things as council looked forward, and we found that we actually started, um, knowing the possibilities of having this sold, of us working to have this sold, really, we're kind of running thin. Um, with the one ninety-six plan and, um, meetings, we discussed that this was something that really was pivotal to what our downtown looked like. Um, so we started looking at a lot of different avenues, what, what could happen. Um, our biggest concern as a council that we're discussing in the meetings is not having control of what happens there. Um, meaning that if someone goes and purchases tomorrow at a reasonable price and makes it the biggest redemption center in town, or area to store, whatever, we, we would have no control over any of that if someone was to buy the building and leave it at its state that it is right now. Um, there are a lot of liability concerns. Um, so we actually got to the point where we actually, as, as a town, um, met with Mrs. Miller. She came in, and she was one of, one of the people that really wanted to address this. She, um, she, as being generous as she is, would like to see the town end up with the property, not just that property, but the Mill Street, um, property also, where the other, with the other mill is torn down. Pretty much the, the riverfront property, she would like to see the town, um, at the end, actually end up retaining. And she was actually talking of, uh, working with us, giving us a very much reduced price on it, um, and it wasn't free. I mean, there, there was no real mention of ever giving away. Uh, matter of fact, we, you know, there was definitely, it was told to us that it was not going to be a free item, but it's something that they would actually do at a very reduced price. Um, after we met, we actually gave the direction to Steve and his staff to actually look at all the possibilities. Um, grant money, um, cleanup money. Um, with that, you actually, there's many different levels. Um, the, whether you're getting brownfield money, uh, is it brown?
Brownfield money.
Brownfield money, um, really depended on what the level of need was there, what needed to be cleaned up. Uh, we've actually had D E P men, multiple meetings with D E P going over exactly what's been tested on the site, what needs to be done, what already has been done, and what still needs to be done. Uh, we've actually had people come in and test the paint, test the window caulking, look at all the building and find out really what the extremes would be. And this isn't just on, on the, um, the mill, but also on Mill Street to see what's there. Um, so we've done a lot of homework on this. The hardest thing is, is even if the mill is given to us, the town doesn't have the capability of actually paying to get it torn down. I mean, we, we don't, we can't just reach in the bank and pull it out and get it done. And at the end of the day, you know, the last thing we want is a big building that now we'd be liable for. Um, and, and as anything goes, and, and I think a lot of you mentioned the idea that if we purchased this building, we actually get all the liability with it, which is really not the case. Unfortunately, um, the, the evils that are in the ground and stuff was done for previous people. I don't care who buys it, that kind of stays along with the people that owned it before. And we're seeing that with the bona fide, defined area up in Lisbon, um, even before the Miller Hydro owned it, other people actually were dumping there, and they were actually just as responsible as cleaning it up as, as anybody that owned it after. So we've learned a lot, actually with our lawyers and, and everybody else looking into this, what our liabilities would be. Um, so we're looking at all the different avenues. Um, the downfall is, is to get the town to, to go and get cleanup money to actually even clean up the site after. We, we intentionally have to own it. We can't, we can't, we can pursue money for other people, but it's a little bit more difficult. So what we're going to actually talk about and, and hopefully have a discussion with council tonight is, um, if the town was to do anything, um, I would like to see it actually be, if we were to go to bond to actually somehow get this property, I would like to see it be with an ending that we actually can use the property, meaning that there's no sense buying the building or retaining the building, even if it was given to us, if we can't do anything with it. And if we were to do something with it, we got to make the property usable at the end. Um, there's roughly, what, five and a half acres of, uh, property there. It used to be the oldest, it used to be a ball field, a lot of history back in that building and that property, very nice. And as was mentioned, and we talked about, the river's only getting cleaner. This property is only going to be an asset more so tomorrow than it is today, but as we move forward. Um, with the downtown, with the one ninety-six master plan that we're developing, it really, everything that we talked about hinges off our waterfront. You know, being the driving force, what brings people to town as far as for our walking paths. Um, we're just getting ready to start construction. Um, the bid's been awarded to our new path. The new path basically ends up pretty much right where this property is. So it's, it's, it's not unreasonable to think that someone could actually walk the whole path and end up down in this property, whatever it would end up being. Uh, what the town is proposing to put out, and what we're going to be doing, is, is going through the, uh, discussion tonight, and if the council wants to and, and feels that we need to move it forward to actual public hearing, would be the idea of, of coming up with a bond, um, with enough to purchase the building, which is the smaller of the costs, tearing the building down, cleaning up the lots to the point where it'd be a, a, it would actually be a grassy lot when we got done, a usable grassy space, whether or not you did moxie on it, or, um, there is a lot of options. We've looked at, um, with our planner on staff, um, not just for the one ninety-six plan, but we also have the planner to use to actually look to see what's possible with this property. And there is, and there is options with this once it's cleaned up to actually sell off some of the space for commercial, commercial use, whether that, whatever that would be, but it would actually be really up to the town what they'd want to see. Uh, there are, there are other buildings on the site that can be used, restaurants and stuff, that's not part of this process, this, um, package. Um, but I think one of the biggest things that we have to look at is, is this is our opportunity to control that piece of property. Um, it is for sale. We've actually, um, I got to give credit to Don Span and the Miller Group to actually being very patient with us, because we have been really dragging our feet for months to actually get to this point. But we're at the point now where this isn't something that we can actually just kind of coast on forever. Uh, they gave us an opportunity and, and, and the offer to work with them, but it's, it wasn't, it wasn't never-ending. Um, so we need to, as, as a council, uh, come up with a plan to either do it or not. Um, I mean, the public hearing will help us direct the idea, what direction we would go with it, but basically at the end, we're at the point where we actually say, yes, as a town, we're interested and we want to do something, or no, as a town, we have no interest, and whatever happens, that mill happens to it. And that's basically where we're at in the process. Um, I would hope to think that we'd have the control of what happens down there, because if we don't, you know, we, we don't know what tomorrow would bring. Uh, that price may drop down to the point of what is available for us, and anybody could buy it and do whatever they want with it, you know, which, which would be pretty critical. Um, so as we go through, you know, we're going to have some discussion. What Steve's going to have to talk about is some of the histories behind it. Um, again, we're not going to talk about dollar figures tonight and the cents. Uh, we can kind of give an idea or a range, but it's actually, um, some of it is, is, um, not, not to the point where we'd be talking about the exact dollar figure. Um, again, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of different opinions on this out there, a lot of them, you know what I mean, from every different angle. Uh, we've talked to multiple people. I've talked to individuals that looked at this as an envision, in an investment, you know, and done months of research to walk away and say, it's just not, it's just not practical to do anything that we would see as, as profit setting for them, you mean? So it's, it's tough. I mean, we have a mill that's been sitting there for quite some time, and it's not, it's not going away. It's sitting there, so we have to try to decide what to do with it as a council. Um, what I'll do is I'll pass, give this over to Steve. Steve's going to give us kind of a run view of where we're actually, if we were to, um, if we were to actually purchase it and demolish it and actually reclaim the property, you know, we, we, what, what steps we would have to go through and, and what steps has already been.
I'll, I'll start first. Uh, the building went on the market in about two thousand and nine. We started working with the Miller Group in two thousand and eight to try to do something with the mill. Um, they formally put it on the market. We have been involved in every tour of that facility with developers or interested parties. Um, I would say over the last five years, there's probably been ten people, ten developers who have looked at it, and they've all walked away from it. Um, Harriman Associates did a study for the Miller Industry Group to look at the feasibility of the building. Uh, by the time they were done, uh, it is structurally sound. It needs a new roof. Uh, it needs new windows. The exterior walls need to be repaired. By the time you're done, the estimate they gave was roughly, uh, two point two million, just to, to get it into shape so you could actually start doing work on the inside. Uh, and those are their numbers. Um, we have worked with the D E P numerous times over the last couple of months. We have, uh, information, uh, from them of all the surveys that have been done. Uh, C D and Mayor have done, it's an engineering firm, they have done a tremendous amount of work. The material, the book that Mrs. Miller has and the D E P has is quite thick. Um, from what we're reading and what we're being told by the engineers, uh, that there is no asbestos left on the site. It's all been, it was removed ten years ago. Uh, there are no PCPs in the window caulking that was tested. Mrs. Miller paid for all of this. Um, and the only contamination that was left was lead in the building, which did not cover all the walls. It only covered, uh, probably three feet up. So when you look at the percentage of lead compared to the amount of concrete there, uh, it's a very small amount. Um, the, uh, environmental firm that did the testing for, uh, Miller Industries felt pretty confident that if the building was demolished and they were to do a test to see how many parts per million were in the, in that, it would be below the standard that they would, uh, uh, to put it into a hazardous waste dump. So they're, uh, comfortable with the fact that, uh, if you were to pulverize it and, and drop it on site, uh, that would be one way of disposing of it. Um, the, uh, cost that Mrs. Miller had to demolish that was from a group out of Massachusetts, Costello. Uh, they had put a half a million dollar price tag to demolish that and remove the material. Um, and they all have to go through the environmental process, uh, to make sure that it's, the material is safe. Um, we got another quote today, uh, from a company out of New Hampshire. We couldn't seem to find anybody in Maine who would be interested in tearing it down. It's a big project. Um, and their price is, uh, pretty much, they gave several different options, but one compared, similar to the one that Costello gave was, theirs was five hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So they were within the same ballpark. Um, so that pretty much covers the cost of the building being torn down, um, if you have no environmental issues with the lead. Otherwise, every, all the material has been removed. Um, and that's where we are.
The, um, again, it, it's one of those things where even, speaking of Mrs. Miller, I mean, there is no, even though years ago, there was even a permit actually looked at for, for demolition of the body, the, the building, there is no interest on our behalf of actually tearing it down, um, financially. I mean, it's just, it, it's never been, it put to us as an option that she would do. Um, yes, she is paying taxes on the building at this point. Um, as it actually keeps falling apart, I'm not sure if the taxes keep diminishing or not, but I would assume they would, you mean, to a point. Um, the downfall is just getting to the point where, um, I wouldn't call anybody being, um, how would I say, desperate, but to the point where if someone came up for a very reasonable amount of money, bought the mill to take that liability away from her, that same person would have full control to do whatever they wanted to after, at that site. Um, there are some, um, with the Miller Hydro there, there are some, um, some easements and stuff with the property we've looked at, um, and those people would have to deal with the same ones. Um, but it would just be a shame for someone to buy that at a very reduced rate and just not have the money to actually do anything with the building and have it just sit there the way it is for years to come. I mean, it, it could be there, as some people mentioned, longer than we're around, but, um, I just feel at this point in time, this is the option for the town to actually, um, to move on it, to do something with it. Um, you know, I wish it was free. One of the things that we'd look at is, um, and we have, and I know that Steve has with his, um, his departments, is look at money, once we were to purchase the building, look at money to actually help us clean it up. And there are, there are potentially, um, funding out there for that. Um, the Mill Street, um, there's no question about it, there is still some more cleanup needs to be done there, and we've pretty much not been assured, but actually are very confident that, that, that will fall within the idea of getting money to help clean that site up if necessary. The, um, the site down at the Rumbow does have some areas that, that may need to be cleaned up, just because of things done over the, over a period of time. And once we were to own that, we do have an opportunity of getting, um, brownfield money to actually help work with that cleanup also if necessary. Um, the downfall is it's really hard for us to actually go out and, and look for grants and look for money unless, unless we own the building. I mean, besides that, it's really not, it's something that we, we can't pursue very far. Um, we're to the point now where we've had the staff and the management spend a lot of time in a lot of what I call monies, but it's basically resources to actually get to the point where we're at. So, um, we actually, as a council, need to decide if we want to move forward and actually work with the, with the citizens and make sure that's what they want, but we're at the point where we really have to decide if it's something we're going to move forward with or actually just, just not spend any more time on it. I mean, that's kind of where we're at. Um, does council have any questions as far as initially before we go through any more of the information, or?
I'll just share you the brownfield money, uh, the timeframe on that. The applications are due, I think, next month in September. Um, it, it works on the federal government fiscal year, which is October one to, uh, September thirtieth. Um, there's no guarantee that we will get this funding. We've, Maine has been probably one of the more successful states in the country getting these monies. Uh, they generally like to, from what we're being told, we have somebody who's willing to write the grant for us for free. Um, and then hopefully we, we would have to put it out to bid if somebody was going to, uh, work with that, and they are hopeful that they would get it, but there's, they know there's no guarantee, uh, that we would have to award it to them if that was the case. Uh, the most you can get per site is two hundred thousand. So if we were to do the Mill Street site, uh, that would cover the cost, according to C D and Mayor, of removing the hazardous material. of removing the hazardous material there. The Rumbow Mill, if you chose to tear it down, you probably wouldn't need brownfield money. Because from what we're being told and by the engineering firms and DEP, the only hazardous material on site is the lead. There is some closure on some of the material that was underneath the pavement and that's all considered, if you don't disturb that, you don't have to do anything with that. So that's, you don't have to touch unless you decide you want to dig up the pavement and then you go through the whole cost. But we could subdivide that property into two different lots and be available, if possible, for 400,000 if we went that route. But it may not be a need for that.
The process that we're looking at and to move forward, what we're doing tonight would be multiple steps. One, tonight, with council, would actually make a vote on, to make a notice to the public. Pretty much what that would be is actually putting a public notice for a public hearing. What that would be is to give us a knife to air from the public views of what their thoughts and concerns would be, either for or against. Then what we would actually do is move from there is actually, at that point, we'd have final numbers from what a bond would look like and how long it would be put out for. A bond like this, I mean, the property, once we, it's not like buying a bond, to me, it's not like a bond for a piece of equipment that has a 10-year lifespan or 20-year lifespan. This piece of property's gonna be here as long as the town's gonna be here. So the bond, to me, would actually be a long-term bond to actually spread it out so it's not a very large impact to the taxpayers. At that meeting, if we were to move forward, we would actually vote on the bond, the amount of the bond and what the bond structure would look like. And then what my hope would be is actually for us to do a special election to actually have the taxpayers, the town's people actually come forward and actually vote it up or down. And then from there, that would be the message to the council, either the town is interested in the site or they're not interested in the site. And that would be there, you know, it would actually relieve a lot of the department heads one way or the other to figure out where we're going. The reasoning behind the idea of having its own election is two concerns. One is, one that we really need to move forward to the point in giving Mrs. Miller some type of answer, because we have been waiting for a while. The second is, in November, there are quite a few bonds coming up, well, potential bonds. One of the ones that we know we're working forward is with the Water Department, potentially for the new pipe, standpipe up on Opland Road. And also a project they've been working on for Frost Hill, potentially, to actually replace some pipe. My concern would be is, even though those items really don't affect the taxpayers directly, it may, multiple bonds may not give the people the opportunity to be educated on what they're voting on quite well. This being a standalone vote, I think people would be very educated that went to vote and know exactly what they're going for. But it would be our due diligence to actually educate them, either through the public hearing. I think the idea of actually going down on site is awesome. And, you know, I think before a public hearing, we could probably arrange prior to that public hearing to actually have someone on site. I'm not sure the liabilities, the tours and all that stuff, but I'm sure.
That's up to Mrs. Miller.
But I'm sure, I can't speak for that, but I agree. I mean, I think it'd be nice to go down there. We are working with that planner to get a, for the public hearing, drawings of exactly what the mill offers, the site, what could be done, what the easements look like, what our restrictions would be. You know, we've done a lot of homework, so hopefully at the public hearing, we could show. And we're not expecting people to actually go out for a bond on sight unseen. We really want to show them what's there and what the potential will be and at the end, what it would be. I don't feel that, and this is my own opinion, that we ought to do part of a project. To me, either we go for bond for enough to get it to the point where it's usable space, to go out and just purchase a building and not be able to do anything with it is, to me, kind of useless. To tear it down and have unusable property, to me, is really not practical. I would like to see, I would like to see Moxie days on there next year, wouldn't that be awesome? I mean, that downtown business people would love that, you know what I mean? But again, there's so many options, and I'm not just linking it to Moxie. This is a piece of property that once you have, they're not making any more of it. It's something you have forever, so. Discussions from council at all of the procedures?
Can we apply for brownfield without owning the property?
No.
No? What was that?
Have like a P and S agreement in place on the stipulation that be, via, you know, what site contaminants or going through that process you can. But basically, the town has to have ownership or in that process have owned the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Just if everybody didn't hear that, basically what she had mentioned, just, it'd be nice, probably we come up to the mic. But she mentioned the idea that potentially you could actually start the process of going in for applying. But it would have to be an agreement there saying that we would actually attain ownership at some point in time, right? Is that?
The purchase and sale agreement would depend on the availability of us getting funding. If we weren't able to get funding, then the purchase and sale agreement would be null and void. If we were able to get funding for that site to clean it up, then it would be our obligation to purchase it, because that would be the agreement.
The biggest question of that is, the site that we're looking at may not qualify because they may not need to have any cleanup, you know what I mean, the Rumbow Mill itself. If the lead count is low enough, there really wouldn't be any cleanup unless we started digging up the hot top and some of the other areas. So, I mean, it's, we may be.
And to apply, you have to do a phase one and a phase two analysis, which is, paperwork's been done. But we, as the potential owners, would still have to go through those steps on our own to get that submitted with the grant.
The downfall of phase two, by the time you get to the end of the phase, it costs us $50,000 to potentially get 200, which unless you owned it, doesn't really seem like it makes a lot of sense, but.
I thought I understood that the Mill Street and Rumbow Mill properties were linked in terms of sale. Okay. Are we able to apply for brownfield funding in general for both properties at once?
Yes.
Okay. So, and we know we need it on Mill Street.
Yes, we do, yeah. That's a given, yeah. And one brownfield grant for 200,000 would cover the expense of that.
But we'd only have 150,000 because phase two would have cost 50,000.
The estimate to clean up is 175,000.
You had mentioned Fern that we were going to have a special election. When would you be thinking that would be?
Steve's actually done the dates and the election actually could be towards the end of September.
September 24th.
Yeah, I mean, I personally think it should be on the November ballot just because it's something, it's so big, a decision for the town. I feel it really should be the maximum exposure and the maximum number of voters. I don't want to see it slide through, you know, 100 people voted and, you know, it should be as many people as are gonna come out, will come out and vote on it, so then it's the decision of the town, not whoever happened to notice it. So I think if we're gonna go forward with it, it should be on the November ballot.
I would agree with Mark, not only because of the popular for the November voting, but also the cost to have an additional voting session, I think, is not responsible on our part because we want to get something through.
I'm a little torn on it because I agree with Mark that we could, you know, A, we could save money, like Dylan pointed out. But I think we already had some money put aside for an extra.
We do.
Election. But on the flip side, I do have a concern about the bond issue not getting enough information to the public that's not also intertwined with all the other bonds. And especially for the bulk of voters who go in November, who don't do as much reading or homework as some others do. And, you know, I think there'll be a huge wash of information. It's a big, you know, it's a big election time.
But ultimately, they're still citizens and they pay taxes and they should have a right to vote in something that's important to the town, I think.
I agree.
Just the most informed voters. That doesn't seem reasonable to me.
No, I'm thinking that there's too much information that's gonna go out there. That's what I think, too much information, too many bonds, that we're offering the opportunity for more voters. I mean, I see, I can see both sides, that's the thing I see. I see people having, oh my gosh, how many things are on the ballot? And it's a lot of information to absorb, especially for people who have very busy lives and don't have the opportunity to watch every council meeting and go to every other meeting and do, you know, I think that, I like the idea of having the extra opportunity to learn more about that individual issue, which has such huge, long-term impact, possibly, for Lisbon. But, I mean, I see your point, I do, I just, I'm torn, I don't know.
We see how many people come up for the school budgets and, you know, that's 14 million dollars. And, you know, that creates a lot of controversy, you know, around that budget time. And I don't know if we'd get more than the school budget for the mill property. I mean, that's not very many people.
Can I say something?
You can say whatever you like, Roger.
I'm all for November. But I think if we did our homework right and started using the papers, like I said yesterday, too, not little things in the back, spending some money so people can see and read about it, like the article today in the paper, do it in multiple times, in multiple papers. If we really want it and get it out there, people are gonna read it and they're gonna know about it. We have got The Sun, we've got Brunswick Paper, we've got The Gazette. And I really think we don't utilize that enough.
And it's free.
Some of it is, yes, but.
Not always.
But we don't utilize it enough, and other municipalities do use it a lot. And I think that would probably turn the tables.
Are you talking about putting bigger, like quarter-page ads, half-page ads that are information?
People have want more information, they'll read the papers, they'll do this.
Right, because we can't rely on someone reading it on.
We could have something up on the website. So if they read the paper and they want more information, they could go to the website if they want to. You've got to have the information out, this is supposed to be an information thing. And we seem not to do that. You know, and I think if we really use this, it would probably work. And there is one situation, the Water Department, they do have a lot of things. And I can remember going in and looking at all these bonds and saying, heck, no, 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 no. You know, so.
That was my biggest concern, is the idea of the standpipe project that's gonna be coming out in November. If people would pick or choose, not really being.
Right.
And again, I'm not picking on people that wouldn't be educated to the point, the idea of knowing that that wouldn't affect their taxes, but yet there's still a bond that would need to go out there. There's been a lot of work put in, in all these projects, so it's, again, it's tough, especially when you, and I'm not saying that the cost is lightly thought for a special election. It's more the idea of having people go strictly with the idea of making a choice, do they want this or don't they want this? And again, that's where the thought process came. I mean, I have no problem, as long as it works with the people that we're working with to allow us to go that long, which I'm sure if we spoke and I knew we're moving forward, it probably wouldn't be a problem. But again, it's one of those things where that's why we brought it up tonight and that's why we're talking about it in public. And it's something we also can actually bring up at the public hearing and see how the people feel about it at the public hearing to give us an idea, you know, where they would like to potentially do this, whether it would be a special election or. I'm not sure about the timeframe, but that's just something we'd have to work with.
We could hold the public hearing as scheduled, which would be the 20th. And then you do the warrant for that the same evening. And then we have up to a year after that to do the election, according to Roger. So you could either do it in September or you could do it in November, either one.
Question.
Yep.
Pushing it off till November, what would that do to the application process for any funds?
The bond bank for the fall has already closed, it closed.
As far as for the brownstone?
Oh, brownstone funding.
A lot of times, the governments first come, first served.
We will, if you want to pursue that and we get a nod from the public, we can start the application process. The person who's doing that for us has already volunteered to do it at no cost. And.
We could actually get, what Steve's saying, we tend to, at our public hearing, if we actually felt that there was enough incentive to move forward, we could actually get a tentative sales agreement, tentative meaning that it actually would only go if it was voted by the people. And if it didn't get voted by the people, it would actually just be void. With that tentative sales agreement, we could actually start pursuing some of the funding. And that would be the idea of, it would be tentative on the idea of people voted for it. If it didn't vote for it, it'd be like.
Phase one or phase two?
Yep.
Both of them, we'd have to do the phase one and phase two analysis.
Yeah.
First.
Which actually would be restrictive, because we're not gonna spend the money to find out unless we get voted on. So, again, that's something we'd have to work out a little bit more, I think, just to see what would be.
You have to do that before the application.
Yeah, but what's the due date on the app?
Oh, and they never know, it depends on as far as the bets on that, but it usually comes out in October.
How do they make their decisions, though?
Not till May.
Is it lumped or it's not first come, first served, then?
No, it's based on, they really base it on a lot of things. One of the things with the brownfields, would you like to come on?
If you could, please, I was just gonna, I didn't want to interrupt you, but.
That's where you get to practice.
That's right.
You get practice.
And if you could actually tell us who you are.
I'm Tracy Stubber, Economic and Community Development Director. In regards to the brownfields program, how it works is that your monies aren't available until the following year. But one of the things with the brownfields is that they like to spread the money. So for communities that have never had brownfields funding, they would be probably more top on the list to receive some of the funding. And, you know, again, as to that application process, whom Steve and I met with is a person who has done this and pretty much every grant she puts in gets awarded the money. So she's got a very high successful rate. I worked with her in Auburn as well on brownfields.
The deadline for putting paperwork in would be?
The date will come out in October, I mean, that's when you know within the application. But it's just doing that homework, you know, prior to. The one thing with the application is that it can't be in the ownership. But we can have a purchase and sale agreement in place that we're going to do that. But you're still required to do the phase one and phase two.
So what you're saying is, we're gonna pay money whether we end up buying that or not? Because we have to do phase one and phase two?
Have to do phase one and phase two of the application.
And I just want to make sure, a lot of this actually can be done later on. I mean, it, the bigger part of the cleanup is not so much on that site of where the big building is, potentially. So, I mean, it's, the idea of us pushing to November earlier, I don't think really is really based on the idea of potentially looking for that funding. I mean, it'd be nice to do it sooner than later, but, I mean, I think we want to have everybody to, I don't want to put any pressures saying that we have to do this because, you know what I mean? It's more, my biggest pressure is, is we've just been working with a realtor and an owner for several months, basically dragging our feet. And every time a new person comes along that potentially wants to look at it, they have to use the idea, well, we actually have someone has first dibs on it, we're waiting for them. So we've been the person that people have been waiting on. In the meantime, we actually really haven't been taking that role. We've been working with every person coming through like they are, you know, a potential buyer, just so it will just keep falling through. But there's only so long we can actually keep saying that we're interested and not keep dragging it off.
Well, and as you decide, as far as on the site and you're looking at the site and part of the whole redevelopment of 196 and a quarter is really you have an asset and that's the river. More developers will be more apt to build something there, but putting that money up front is gonna be a little bit sticky for them. They may not come forward. But if there's a partnership within the community to do something and be able to market the property, know that it's a clean site, you have the V-Rap letter saying it's a clean site and you can do something there, it's gonna be more viable as far as for a developer to look at the site. And again, with the trails coming through there, it might be some other possible grants within conservation or working with trail grants or parks and that sort of thing that can be looked at. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you. Steve, I'd like to talk a little bit about a bond. How many years can a bond like this go for?
You can do a bond for five, 10, 15, 20, 30 years, max. And you try to base it on the asset value and appreciation. Land hopefully appreciates, doesn't appreciate. Again, I would look at it in terms of, how long do you want to pay for this? And how is it gonna impact the tax rate? I think I gave you that information, what it would add to the mill rate. And this is, these are rough, these are just, we're hoping that it might be less for interest.
these are rough, these are just, we're hoping that it might be less for interest rate, we don't know what the bond rates are gonna be, but, uh, we, uh, looked at fifteen years, and, uh, was, would add twenty cents to the mill rate roughly, uh, for fifteen years, and you did it for less than that, say you did it for ten years, you would add twenty-seven cents to the mill rate. So I always like to, to see stuff paid off a little bit quicker, I don't like, schools are one thing, when you bond, you know, a lot, sums of money for thirty years, you know that infrastructure's gonna be there, but I don't like having bond debt, it's nice to get stuff paid off.
Land's gonna be there a lot longer than a school, I hear.
Yeah, yeah, the land will be there a lot longer than the school. So it's really up to you how much, how long out you'd like to do that.
I know I have brought it up to you, but I would like to see something trying to work with the school for the track, if we are gonna go to bond for this large amount of money, also try to take care of a project that the citizens have really been looking for and asking for, for a while, and I'm, I don't know the exact number, but it's between three and five hundred thousand dollars, if we're going to a bond for this large amount already, I would like for us to explore, to see what a, a bond to take care of the mill site project in the track together would be. Not only to get two projects done, but also, we'd also get the support from a lot of parents from the school department, and that might help us with getting this project on the road.
You think we can put a new track down by the river?
No.
That would be a neat thought, though, wouldn't it? Running down by the river, that'd be a, a whole new class of running, right?
If we are gonna move forward with this, I would definitely like to see us explore a bond to include the track before we, we move forward really anymore.
I think what that's, it would be public, when we do the public hearing, we can actually give a bunch of different options, and actually, at that point in time, the council would have to make a decision from that input of that night. Again, I mean, that's, we just hope that we advertise it well enough that the public hearing be well attended, and we could actually get, get the people here that we need to. Again, the public hearing would actually be the twentieth.
Yep.
Yeah, would we hold that here?
We'd hold that here.
I would hope that we'd need more room, but.
I hope so, too.
Yeah. The, um.
August, our next meeting.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, is there any thought to the council that this would generate enough interest that we would want to do it at another location? Do you think that we were gonna be able to fit everybody in this room?
I think we could fit them in here.
You think we'd be able to fit them in here?
We, no, I don't know, but.
It was all over the paper this morning, and we didn't get much participation.
Yeah.
That was the hope. So I'll leave it up to council to actually give us some direction on this, if you want to move forward to actually, to make notice for a public hearing, if that's the way you like to do, we, we'd need to actually make a vote on that, to move forward. And then we could actually, at least get to that point, and then hear what people have to say, and at that meeting, what we would actually offer is, we would actually have a lot more information prior to that meeting, we would actually see if we could arrange to actually have a site tour, I mean, that's more than, more than, I think, doable, I would hope. We would actually have our planner have drawings and layouts of what this would look like, the final project, and potential what later on it could look like, too. So we have a lot of people, we would actually have Dennis here that night to go over the findings of what, could he's actually been working as far as environmentally wise. So the public hearing night, there would be a lot of opportunity for people to speak, and everybody should be, will be able to get their opinions, and then, and, and it's, it's gonna be a public hearing, but more of a workshop setting where everybody hopefully has multiple opportunities to speak. So would like to actually entertain a motion to actually move forward to the public hearing for the twentieth. We'll hold off now, okay, Larry, please? The, um, entertain a motion that we, to move forward for the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Did you get that?
Is Greg, is Greg?
Yes.
Four, okay, seven, zero.
Sorry, it was kind of a weave, it wasn't quite all at one time.
It was kind of a weave for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, just to, if everybody's all set, that's right, we have to get the people out, and just, um, let's just keep moving forward here, because we got a little bit more to go through. Next item, please.
Other business, the Moxie Festival overview.
If we could.
Deb and Tracy, you can talk.
I'll bring her up. Tracy Stuber, Economic and Community Development Director. You all should have a handout that I put together, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, hopefully it's pretty self-explanatory. I would like to mention that when you go onto page three, and you see the list of people that have been involved with this festival, I came on board June seventeenth was my first day, and the first thing I was said, oh, you have Moxie Festival, okay. I had had previous plans with my family, was visiting from Florida for the weekend of Moxie Festival, that, so I was not able to attend all of the weekend's events, I was able, had my phone ready if anyone needed anything, and I certainly was here through that month preceding up to that. I just want to say this committee worked very, very hard and diligently, and they had lost the economic development person prior to me before the festival, so the, a lot of them had to step up and take on more responsibility than what they had originally signed up for. It was definitely a group effort, and from what I understand, nobody has said they weren't coming back next year, so that makes me feel good. So before we go through the budget, what I like to do is bring Deb up, Wagner, who started off as a media person, and then was brought on to kind of be the festival coordinator. So Deb, you wanna come up?
Hi. Deb Wagner, resident Lisbon Falls. So the 2013 Moxie Festival just was amazing, we definitely had well over forty thousand people over the three days, we are, it was very well-attended, we did some moving around with some events, we had groups step up to take volunteer positions, all of the games at the MTM Center were done for the main, with people working for the main children's cancer program, we had just council members like Roger step up and help with the parade, Gina, of course, had been the parade chair, but I saw many of you at the festival events and encouraging all of us, so on behalf of the committee, thank you very much for all of your support. And I'm not sure what else you would like me to talk about.
One of the, I guess, I'll start first, I'll let the people, one of the, the questions I've had is, is basically the idea of, since some of the changes, is, is if next year is, is gonna be basically kind of like this year, or are we gonna head in a different direction, or?
We are going to change things up, and it's mostly what I really want to do is, is sit down and have some time with the committee, we're gonna start planning next month, I did give them at least one month off for the summer, but we have a lot of work to do, I really would like to look at the logistics of everything, and to see how we can bring in more additional revenues to, to continue this festival and, and thrive in, and bring in more people to the area. So what that looks like, we'll be looking at all the different locations for logistics, and meeting with each of the, of committee members, we did have a debrief and meeting, it went very well, we got a lot of good ideas. Mr. Bono had come in, and apparently, he'd come in to see me, and he was one that wasn't a fan of Moxie Festival, this year he became a fan, he said that he did have patrons that was able to get to his shop, so that certainly pleased him. I'd like to see more of the businesses open and, and work along with the event, because I think that they can certainly benefit from new people coming into the community. We've had, regarding the T-shirts, people from all over, down Florida, I don't know, Utah, California, wherever, are just emailing and responding in regards to the, to the T-shirts, in fact, I'm still filling up orders that came in late in regards to the T-shirt. So we're really gonna look at everything, I like to be able to do more in a kids-type area, maybe look at possibility of bringing a carnival, really making things happen so there's something going on throughout the weekend to keep people here in the community, that's gonna be my focus, so.
And while I appreciate Tracy's enthusiasm and her economic development type of aspect to the festival, I think for those of us who are town residents, or Brenda Rogers, or Gina, or people who've worked on the committee for a long time, who live in the town, really noticed a change in people stepping up, I mean, there were, I, I mean, I remember being in front of council last November, when people were talking about, would we really have a 2013 Moxie Festival? And it couldn't have rested all on the shoulders of a Scott Benson, or a Tracy Stuber, I mean, it's gotta be the people of the town stepping up, has to be support from town council, and I think we really had that this year, and I really felt that there were a lot of people who were, you know, we listened as a committee to the people in the town, and we really tried to respond to their concerns. So while there's sort of these great big plans in the horizon, we still want it to be, you know, our town, our, you know, our values, our Lisbon values, you know, going forward, too.
Endless possibilities, right, but yet, at the end of the day, I think it did come forward, because I did have commented that some of the, it seemed like grave discussions we had there for a while, which they really weren't, but they were just honest discussions of where we were going, I think the people really did step forward and actually take care of it, and I didn't hear anybody complain about this year's festival, everybody had really good things to say at all, at all ends, and which is kind of nice, you know, even, you know, there's always, there's always people that have concerns, but, you know, besides that, I think it went out really well, it really did.
And there's always room for improvement, but it's really the personal relationships and that we still want to maintain with, like Rick from the Powwow, or working with, you know, Mark Stevens in the 5K race as it grows and grows, and the parade as it gets bigger, you know, it's, it's not about bringing in some sort of, you know, experts or whatever, we still want it to be our town, and the people in our town having a big influence.
I think that the road race went, what, five hundred to several hundred this year?
Seven hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
And the cash out grew from about a hundred and twenty-five to almost two hundred cars a share, there was, yep, there was a hundred and ninety small cars, so I mean, it's, every year, it's actually just kind of clicking along, so.
I just have a question on the last line, I think there needs to be a correction there.
Probably.
What page is she, though? Page eleven. Or I could be wrong.
Which one?
The line that's in the black, available revenues for?
Um.
Two thousand.
Well, that would be kind of like, because how it starts and some of the expenses come out will do, well, during that year, so they can begin at the beginning of, because we're talking July one, so it'll be July one thirteen up until June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. So, when you look at the, it kind of goes backwards because of how the fiscal year goes, a lot of the expenses and the revenues comes in after, in the next fiscal year.
Okay, I see.
That explain?
I guess.
But there are funds, there, there is seed money still there, too, actually, so.
There is actually, and again, when you look at the comparisons from last year, it's not too far off, and again, it goes, just as Deb said, it really goes to, to the committee and how dedicated they were to, to really work, work hard at this. You also will notice that within the budget, within some of the revenues, that with regarding T-shirt sales, you know, a percentage of that went to St. Matthew's as well as the vendors, a percentage of that went to the Lisbon Falls Christian Academy, and again, we still made out, you know, fairly well, considering on that, so I, I think, you know, again, it's, it's a community event, and it's one to be recognized with, and it's certainly, it's getting its national attention out there. So the idea is, is that, is to keep it home-based for the community of Lisbon, as well as to add to that, to bring in even more people to the area, so.
Okay.
One of the things that Brenda and I went down and, and spoke to the Yarmouth, no, the clam, or, the clam, well, no, we went to the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce, we spoke at the Chamber of Commerce, but we have been learning a lot about how the clam festival works, and it's a, definitely a partnership between, let's say, a nonprofit, like the Boy Scout troop runs a little parking area, and people pay like, you know, five dollars to park, and the Boy Scouts, you know, get the money, but they staff the whole thing and make sure the parking lot isn't messed up, and that's been kind of a concern with some of our open parking spaces, they were like, wow, if you could get the Boys, some, a group like, I'm not saying that that's a definite thing, but a group like the Boy Scouts run it, sure, I'd open my lot up so people could park for the Moxie Festival. So we are trying to work hard so that different groups in town, nonprofits, or churches, or kids groups, can partner to make some money from this festival with all these thousands of people who come in, so.
Any other questions for council?
I just have one quick question, there are public and media relations expense, for the website, is that a yearly expense, or that a one-time fee?
That was a redesign of the website, and it also allowed us to be able to make our own changes, you have no idea how, that was a one, that's a one-time expense, it was put into a WordPress website, and now we can all make our changes, and we don't have to pay somebody to do it, and.
No, I, I think the website is good, but I was just wondering, because we have website for sixteen hundred dollars, and then site design for about fifteen hundred, so I was wondering, are those gonna be three thousand dollars in reoccurring expenses?
I don't think so, I thought you would know that.
As, as far as on that, no, it wouldn't be, I mean, the only fees that you would have as far as the website, once it's designed, is just gonna be your hosting fee and your domain name, so you'll see a definitely decrease in that. This year, it, it really was based on doing the whole new design, which you're gonna pay a higher fee, so between your hosting and your domain name, the fees are much lower.
All right, thank you very much. I just have a question, could you tell us, or possibly what the donation is from the municipal side in Yarmouth for their festival? I'm curious, I know what it is, but I think the public should know.
I don't, I haven't met with them, so I don't. No, I don't know, I don't know what it is.
Okay, I thought it was talked about at a meeting, but.
Okay, why don't you do tell?
Oh, yeah, why don't you say?
Well, I'm not gonna quote something that I don't know, but it's, it's much, much more than.
It's more than twenty-five hundred?
Yes, that's what, what it is.
And I'm, I'm sure it is, and again, in, in fact, the, the next president coming on with the clam festival, I actually had a one-on-one meeting with him, and so I plan to pick his brain a little bit more, and that festival does really take on a lot with, with the cost, and, and what they do regarding, you know, the fees for the vendors and, and everything else, so there's definitely a lot to it.
It's much more commercialized than our Moxie, at this point in time.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
It was a great festival.
Yeah.
Oh, and I understand, I did have someone come into the office and tell me that those are the best fireworks that they've ever seen, so.
Oh, that's cool.
That was good.
Any, any other questions for council?
Good.
CNN will move on, thank you very much, appreciate your time. Next item, please.
The town manager's report.
I have very little, basically, the auditors were in the building last week, they wrapped up things on Friday, be finishing it up hopefully soon, that's one of the reasons we were trying to get the carry forwards and transfers up to clean that up, but Jessica, I think, was in the building a short time today, and talked to them that we'd be doing it on the twentieth, but if anybody has questions from the council about the carry forwards and transfers, just give us a call, and then we'll sit down and go through it with you and explain it. I know for Greg and Dylan, this is the first year, I think that you've seen that.
I'll be in.
Sure, there's a, quite a few questions.
I'll be in.
It's pretty straightforward, otherwise, that's all I have.
Next item, please.
We have no appointments, be Councilor Communications.
I had the pleasure of attending the ribbon cutting for the new career center in the library, it's beautiful, it's a, it's a, a nice little space near the children's area, and it just happened that, at the same time we were all there for the ribbon cutting, a local patron had come over with her toddler to do job hunting so that her little girl could play in the children's area at the same time she was career hunting, so it was a really positive, nice start, and I, I'm, I'm really pleased to see how great it looks, and it could conceivably be a multi-use room at some point, and it's, I wanted to play with those laptops and see what was on there, too, it was really neat.
Looking for a new job?
No.
Yeah, just checking.
But it was, it was really nice to see, we had a gentleman representing the Department of Labor join us, and our new career.
Christine.
Christine Matty, right?
Yeah.
So we have some good professional people, I think that. I think that our library staff are really excited for this opportunity to take advantage of, of this really nice, positive resource. So that was really, it was really cool. It was.
Thank you for being there. Any other?
Yeah. Last month, I had the privilege of going with Representative Kraft and Senator Mason, talking to the governor on Rails to Trail, with the old railroad bed down here. And to everybody's surprise, the governor said, go for it. So we've got another meeting with the head of the DOT and the head of the DOC and the governor and the three of us. And by September, we should know one way or another if it's going to work or not. But it will be a, if it's, if it goes forward, it will go forward. We're going to get a yes or no on this one. And with Pan Am, the governor didn't seem to be too nervous about it. So we'll see. It was a positive meeting.
And this lander butts our potential mill project, right?
Right. Yep.
Anybody else for communications? All good? Dylan, you quiet tonight?
Okay.
All right, a couple of things I just want to add. Last night, we actually had a continuing on with our water sewer meetings where we're actually looking at potentially where the town ought to, if they are, what they're going to do as far as moving forward with either doing a water sewer district, just a water district or combined with the town. I got to say, we've actually had three meetings so far, two official here. And there's a lot of communication. I mean, that's good. We've been, we were told to actually sit down and talk and we have been talking. We've been doing a lot of fact finding where I've been having people come in. So far, we've actually had three people come in and speak from different municipalities and cities telling us how they actually run their water sewer, stormwater. So it's been very educational and again, it's going to be a slow process. Our original intention was to hope to actually come out of these meetings and have something to, for the townspeople to vote on in November. As the meeting last night, I, we feel that, it's, it's not a group that votes, but that there was more of a consensus that'd be very difficult to get something by November, but we are going to continue to keep meeting. That may change, but we're going to keep meeting at our regular, you know, first Monday of the month. Next month is going to be a little different because of the holiday weekend. It may be the second weekend, second Monday, excuse me, at 6:30 because I got to make sure of that because I was late last night, so I got to make sure 6:30 is the time. But again, it is something that's moving forward, so if people have any concerns, they will see the sign out front and they can either get ahold of myself, Steve, or the water commissioners and, or the, or the water department to get any information on that, but it is proceeding forward and, and so far, I've learned a lot through the process already, so hopefully we can keep getting educated. Just want to highlight the idea of what public hearing that we're going to have for the, for the 20th. We do go to use all avenues and hopefully we can put people out because I just kind of put a, put a word out there to citizens, if you're listening, drive by the mill. I mean, you can't miss it when you drive down 196 or coming down Main Street. Look at it and see what it is and actually take a good look and see what potential you think that could be because from what I've seen, from the amount of time I've been on the council and, and working what we have, the only thing, the only way we're going to see that different is if we act on it. And again, that's my own opinion, but again, between now and a public hearing, take a look, drive by, kind of get nosy, look around a little bit, take a good look at what it is and how big of a downtown that really does take up. It does dominate a big part of downtown and how lovely that view would be if you're overlooking the water versus the idea of looking at the white buildings. So again, we're going to try to advertise the best way we can, but word of mouth is always the best, whether you like it or don't like it or totally against it, any advertisement's good advertisement to get a public hearing going. So even if you're strictly against it, it's definitely worthwhile mentioning to people so they can be here to voice their opinions. The other just highlighted thing I want to bring up is at our last council meeting, we talked about the Durham Lisbon Bridge. We actually sent the letter. Roger was in the governor's office the day later. On all different avenues, there was actually mentions about the potential that Lisbon would like to see a sidewalk on the bridge. And Steve actually worked with a Michu and I know that our representatives from, from the state from town, Garrett and Dale, actually proceeded with it. Roger was, he mentioned it to the governor. And by the end of the week, we actually got a notification from DOT that they are, there's going to be a sidewalk on a bridge. They're going to redesign it with a sidewalk. So I think that's positive, it really is, especially if we have something really exciting on the side of the bridge. Would want everybody to be able to walk over to it safely, so.
There's so much there now.
Well, hopefully someday there will be. We got to look forward, so, but.
Your mention of the view of the water made me remember that earlier this week, early in the weekend, I drove down Summer Street to head toward Topsom and I realized that I could see across Night Cellatax for the first time. And it was breathtaking, even though there's still rubble and they're still doing cleanup, it was really breathtaking. And the first thing I thought of was how beautiful it would be to drive down Main Street and look forward and see the river. And if anybody has the chance to do that Summer Street drive, it really gives you a taste of what that can look like and it's really beautiful, so.
Any other communications?
Yes, I'd like to add something to what Fern said. In fact, we are going to have the public hearing and I think it's important because it gives the people the chance. Not all people can make all meetings, but it gives them a time to come and that could be the crown jewel of economic development in downtown Lisbon Falls if that was to happen. We know it costs money, but I challenge citizens that come and it may be against it, to tell us what they feel economic development is because we've had that question many, many times. And I think that this is something that could really help revitalize our downtown, could help revitalize 196. And to be totally against it and not have an answer contrary to it and what else, else we should do in economic development in this town, I think as a citizen, it's important for you to have your opinion. It's important for you to give us options. If you don't feel this is something that we should do, then what should we do for economic development? So I challenge you to do that. I challenge you to attend the meetings, to be part of it. I challenge you to call us and ask us questions. Sorry, but call me. Don't want to call them, call me. And I just challenge you to do that because it's something that we've been dealing with for many, many years. We dealt with it with downtown, we've dealt with it with 196 and it's something that's been there, it's glaring, it's, it's a, it's a white elephant in the downtown and it's something that could help make downtown Lisbon Falls look a lot, lot better. So just consider it and please attend the meeting.
Is that it? With that being said, next item, please.
To adjourn, order 2013-122.
Make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Order passed, seven zero.
Thank you.
You got you out an hour early. Now I got to go to work.
What are you working on tonight, Roger? We have something to sign?
Yep.
We have something to sign yet before you leave.
What are you working on, Roger?
Got to go clean up the grandstand down from Phil.
Larry, it's just part of our meeting, that's all.
I don't envy you that job at all.
Everybody's having an opportunity on the public hearing to voice it.
I get a motor blow.
You get what?
A blow, blow the back, blow the stop.
That's what we're doing.
You get big, big money for that?